And I haven't had to cite anybody. But as typically happens when you do any kind of code enforcement, a knee jerk reaction is the person who's in violation wants to drive around town and point out all the other areas that aren't, that do, that have, are doing the same thing. They're parking on the street. There's two or three areas where people have parked trailers and stuff related to their business for, you know, many years. Payton Drive is one example. A gentleman has a business on that street. But it's in the middle of the street. Payton Drive's not a major thoroughfare like say Harrison would be or Clifty Falls. So I typically overlook that because it's not as much of a dangerous consideration. And there's other areas where I've had some parked, like dump trailers, Tana Maxx Dump Trailer, or like the town has parked on or near a cul-de-sac. I would ask that gentleman to move it. Had to do so several times. Yet they point out, well, there's other cul-de-sacs where there's trailers parked and you don't do anything about that. And I'm going to use Mr. Swick as an example. You know, for years, he's parked his car trailer on his street. But he's, there's only two people that use his cul-de-sac. And both of his neighbors will at times park either a small camper or, like I said, the race trailer on his cul-de-sac. Haven't got any complaints. It's not hurting anybody. It's not a major thoroughfare. But if we were to pass something that prohibited specifically recreational vehicles, boats, campers, trailers, utility trailers, box trailers, enclosed trailers, it would be harder for me to not do it townwide as opposed to singling out certain sections. So what I'm asking you to consider and up for comment, this discussion at this time is possibly looking into adding that wording to our parking ordinance to keep these types of vehicles from being parked on the street. And bear in mind that when I say we prohibit them, I'll give the example of the pontoon boat that was parked up on Harrison Circle. I watched that for a week or two before approaching that person, hoping that, you know, it was just a temporary type thing. They were doing something because it just showed up and it normally was parked up on their parking area. So if we were to pass something like this, it wouldn't mean that you couldn't bring your camper in front of your house for a couple of hours, load it up, and go take your family on a camping trip. So that's how I would plan to enforce something like that.
So you're wanting, I'm sorry, you're just wanting a little more clarity, but still allow the leeway, your judgment, as opposed to a strict townwide no? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I am asking you to consider a strict no, but I would not, I would allow temporary parking, you know, whether, if we wanted to award it for eight hours, 12 hours. I'm just saying, if it became a permanent parking issue or a permanent parking place for said camper, then we would come in and I would come in and say, you know, we can't have that. You have to find alternative parking. So I'm not, I have a problem with something temporary unless it's an obvious obstruction that is going to cause issues.
So I know we've talked, we've talked about this and I've given this a lot of thought. And I think what we should do is put this, have a committee to look over this, you know, our parking regulations and to try and pull things a bit more together. And I need someone on this board to, I was hoping it was going to be Leah, but she's not here tonight. I talked to Ashley. He said he would be interested in being on it. I'd like you to be part of it as well. And then find another couple of people from in the town and talk to the people because it's going to affect, this is going to affect a lot of people a lot of different ways. Some of them for their livelihood because they've got their trailers parked on the street because that's, you know, for their business, others for their recreation. That's my thought. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Well, I mean, we put a committee together. My concern is from a public safety aspect. I mean, there are a lot of roads where you get one car on both sides. You can't get a fire truck down that road. You can't get a wide body ambulance down that road. I know, for instance, Baker Farms, they don't allow parking in that situation because that's another space where if you have cars on both sides, there's no getting any equipment down that road. So I think I like the idea of, and I mentioned it, we may get it clear. Hey, these are the rules. Here's what it is. As long as we still give Scott some discretion on, you know, trying to be fair to everybody, I don't think, but it's, there is a public safety issue we have to look at. If you want to put a committee, that's fine. My only suggestion for that committee would be a mandated period of time. I don't want this to become a six month a year process to do, which, you know, when you start getting committees together, things don't necessarily get answered as quickly as we might like. But I'm fine with that. But like I said, I think there needs to be a timeframe.
So I'm kind of pretty much in agreement with you, but I've got questions. So what, for putting a committee together, what's your goal for them to achieve?
To look over our ordinances, take these suggestions, and then try and figure out what our ordinance should ultimately look like.
Our parking ordinance.
Parking ordinance, yes.
How many parking ordinances do we have?
We've got, it's like three or four pages. I'm just talking about two specific, a specific situation. We've got lots of, lots of different ones, but.
And I guess, of course, we're pretty much going to have to have a attorney involved in at least something, at least part of this.
It's easy to write once you do the hard work because the hard work is exactly what you're discussing.
Right.
And there's a blue million different parking ordinances around the state that you could.
So we need to make, we need to figure out what makes sense, most sense for Dave because there is a lot of diversification within this town.
I think, I strongly agree. We need to be able to hit emergency vehicles, obviously, anywhere they need to go without running over vehicles on each side of the road. So, um, I'd have to.
Would you, would you?
Would you want to head it up?
No. Thank you. I'd ride, I'd ride the town and see what it looks like out there. I'll do that. I don't want to, I don't want to hit up the committee.
Well, Steve's pretty busy.
Yeah.
I was pretty busy.
Uh-uh. We all do it. She'd be happy to do it. You know what?
All right. Well, she's not here. It'd be easy to, it'd be easy to appoint her, right?
That'll teach you.
All right. We'll talk, we'll talk to Leah. Is, are you okay with doing that? Having a committee?
As long as we set us some kind of a timeframe.
Well, why don't you tell us what that time is, Steve?
Well, we don't even have, we've got people for it yet. So I would say once the committee sits to, you know, be no more than, I don't know, 60 days, 90 days. I mean, I don't, I don't know how, how to determine how long it's going to take. How many people make a decision?
Recommendation to the council by the July meeting?
Fine with me if you think it's doable. Ashley, do you think that's going to be doable for a group of people?
I don't know.
I don't know. I just heard 60 days.
Well, let's.
I may, I may get on that once I drive the town and see what we're talking about here. Okay?
Well, let's do this. Let's, let's talk to Leah, see how soon we can get this meeting together and see how, you know, if they, if we can get them moving quickly, then we can, I mean, we're kind of out of the blue on this, so I really wasn't expecting to set up. You know, I don't know how long this is going to take them. I would say we need to get something done by later than August. Because he's still going to have the same issues he's got now.
It's summertime.
Right.
You got all kinds of stuff.
Going into winter, that problem, we either, well, some of the recreational stuff will start to disappear, but we'll still have businesses leaving stuff out there. And I don't want to impact, I mean, I know a lot of people have RVs and things like that. I want them to have, you know, a lot of people enjoy their life, but we still have to be careful about the streets. And I, I can, I know that every time I break up something, you know, hey, this needs to be done. The first thing I hear from everybody is, oh, what, there's this one and that one, and this one and that one. And it's like, well, that's not the answer. So.
So we'll appoint Leah and attempt to have it done by, by August?
Well, I think she's, yes, have something come back for July.
That's what I said, but I don't know that anybody agreed with it. That's just, that was just a suggestion.
All right. Let's try for, let's shoot for July and then see what happens.
Are you making more appointments to this committee tonight? Are you appointing Ashley if he's receptive to that tonight?
Are you receptive to that?
Yeah.
I mean, they may not have an answer in July. I would say by, for sure by August, but at least in July, give us an update within Stan. And then say, we'll have a decision, something for you at the August meeting, something like that. How about that as a compromise?
You're okay with the?
So you're me, Ashley, Leah?
I'll be there.
And that's the committee?
I wasn't volunteering.
I know you weren't.
I wasn't volunteering because I know you're busy.
As long as we don't do it. It's third, third Tuesday or Wednesday because I'm already booked up for that one. But all right, well, then Leah can do it.
Once you guys pull this, pull it together. Okay?
She'll have Leah contact.
I'll contact, I'll.
A meeting time.
I'll contact Leah and she, and she can put the meeting and stuff together. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Next thing then is the Shady Lane cul-de-sac. Okay. When Alicia was still our attorney, I'd noticed that the Shady Lane cul-de-sac was not shown on the town's property, as town, as town property on the county GIS map. I'd asked her about that and because I had understood it had been deeded to the town, prior to the town paying to have it paved. As I remember, she had also thought it had been deeded over. Earlier this year, I brought that to the attention of our attorney as the GIS map still had not changed. On March 24th, they suggested that a title search be done to determine the legal status of the property. I authorized them to do the title search. As it turns out, it belongs to Ron Kohler and Cindy Marsh. That property was paved with 100% town money for $26,700. No CCMG funds were used. The work was approved by the prior council in June of 2022 and that approval was based either on misinformation or disinformation. So I want to tell you what the difference between those two things are. Misinformation is false or inaccurate information. In other words, getting the facts wrong. And disinformation is false information which is deliberately intended to mislead. My first thought was that there are two possible ways of dealing with the situation. One was to accept the deed after the fact. The other is to have the state board of accounts or the state police investigate, investigate to see if any charges are warranted. Charges that could possibly result in felony. I was thinking that neither action should be decided upon tonight. Instead, we should wait until at least next month's meeting so the council can further investigate the situation and so the public has an opportunity to weigh in with the representatives to determine our path forward. But then I discovered this Indiana code. It's a requirement to report. Indiana Code 511-1-27 states a public officer who has actual knowledge of or reasonable cause to believe that there has been a misappropriation of public funds or assets of, of the public office include, including information obtained as a result of a police report, an internal audit finding, or another source indicating that a misappropriation has occurred, shall immediately send written notice of the misappropriation to the state board of accounts and the prosecuting attorney serving in the area governed by the political subdivision. So at this point, I guess I wanted to ask our attorney. Now that we know this information, should we contact state board of accounts and the prosecuting attorney so they can figure, figure out what exactly has happened here?
Have you got that? I'm not familiar with the statute. Have you got the printout of that?
Yeah.
So actual knowledge or reasonable cause to believe? You know, those are two different things. Actual knowledge, we all know what that means. Reasonable cause to believe is something less. So I think that's really the key issue. If you, if you have that, it imposes a duty on any public official. But the question is, what do you have? I don't know what, I don't know what the facts are. You just detailed what the facts were. And so I assume that's in the minutes and, you know, verifiable, but I don't have any of those facts myself.
Well, so the facts are that the property that was paved with town money does not belong to the town.
But the intent was that it was to be deeded over. So my guess is that it was.
How do we know that that was the intent? Because it was never.
Come on, Mark. What the crap are you trying to pull here?
You seem to pull in. Let's just keep this civil. So I understand. So was the property deeded to the town?
No, no.
But it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be, and that was the intent. That was the intent. That was discussed.
There is, guys.
Hey, hey, please, let me. So it was, it, there was an intent to deed. Do we have paperwork showing the intent? I mean, I thought I saw something in this pack of stuff. And I'm just looking through it now because it's just a lot of it here.
Yeah. So the only thing that was deeded over was there was a small section over on Wesleyan Drive. That was deeded over.
But that was done after the, after the one on Shady Lane was done. And we're talking about the one on Shady Lane.
They were both paved at the same time.
Okay.
I think paperwork just got missed, but if, if that's indeed a fact.
I don't know. I mean, it's been a couple of years now. This has been that, you know, and I'm pretty sure the property owners keep a pretty close eye on what their property is and the GIS map. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of things been happening, happening up in that area.
You're making your, your tiptoe around some dangerous area, Mark. I think you need to be careful.
I don't.
Well, so again.
I know the facts right here, Carla. I'm afraid that you may not just want to accept, accept the fact that the town does not own that property, but the town did pay to have that property done.
Yes, but the intent was that it would be deeded over. And if it didn't happen, I'm saying the likelihood is that was a paperwork issue, not a, an attempt to steal from the town.
I don't know.
Well, I'd like.
I can't even believe you're.
To assume more of, I mean, I, I don't know, Eric, I mean, I don't know how we, before we start accusing anybody of anything, I'd like to have a little more, a little more in the way of, if we've got that, we're supposed to do that, if it's something that just didn't get filed because of whatever reason. If it's, if it's.
Well, that's what I think, that's what I think an investigation would find out.
A legal investigation.
A legal investigation.
You are unbelievable.
So who did, who pulled, so you did this to GIS? Who? Did you say your attorneys had already been involved in this?
I'm sorry?
You say our attorneys had already been involved?
We recommended a title search just so it was clear who owned it. You could tell from GIS.
Right.
And it was consistently GIS, but that's not always correct.
Okay. So if, if the intent is it was supposed to be done and for some reason it didn't get done, if we get it, does that solve the issue?
Well, if it would transfer the title if there was a deed. I don't know that there was one ever prepared, but it's a pretty simple deed to do.
Okay. So it sounds like it's a clerical error that we could just fix with getting the paperwork done and then the town's property that is already done, right?
I, I don't know what the state board of accounts would do. They're not looking for trouble in general. Things that get solved, I think, they're probably not too worried about.
Call to the attorney at the time.
What's that?
Call to the attorney at the time. She could probably answer that question.
And you said that she thought that deed had been done. Because usually that'd be the town that would do the deed. Doesn't sound like she remembers exactly what happened since she.
So the one who did, who did the deed for the, the other little section of town over on Wesley.
Oh, there you go. Was there another one transferred?
Yeah, that, that one did get transferred. Seventy-two pages here. Prepared by Robert Lizinski. So you would think that Robert Lizinski would have done both of these at the same time because both things happened at the same time.
Same owner, same owner.
Same owner.
Have we talked to him or her?
Bob, Robert, yeah?
Yeah. Do they have a record of either of both documents or just the one?
Well, there, there is no record of the other document because it never, it never was.
Well, but if he created a deed and just didn't get filed, then he would have a record of creating a deed, wouldn't he?
He'd have, he'd have a form that maybe never got signed. If he, if he prepared it, he'd have it on the computer.
I don't, I don't know. If we, we, I mean, obviously, we really truly think there's wrongdoing, then we have to report it. That's the way the law works, but I, it just seems a little punitive to me. I'd like to just see the issue, the error be fixed.
Well, you're, you're making an assumption that it was an error.
You're making an assumption that it wasn't.
I'm not. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying we do need to find out. I, I'm saying, I believe we're obligated to let somebody find out and for us not to make the assumptions.
This is the only way to find out?
What's that?
This is the only way to find out is to get an attorney involved, find out.
Well, you could certainly ask Mr. Lizinski if he knows and.
And that's what you suggested. Is that correct?
I, I, yeah, I mean, is there, I think what Rocky should correct me if I'm putting any words in there, but what I'm hearing is that there's got to be a way to investigate short of taking it to the state and prosecutors. Is there an internal, do we have access to an investigative service of some kind internally? I mean, I'm looking.
No.
Sorry, no? Okay.
Not for, not for this kind of matter.
Okay.
Not in the wood.
It just.
Military, you know.
It seems very strange that one would have been done and the other one wasn't.
One thing I've seen, not as a council member, but as somebody sitting in the audience over and over again is documents don't always flow through this building as well as they should. I can remember a, a de-annexation that something didn't get filed. And I can remember other things were things didn't get filed. Wrongdoing or not, I don't know. I just, if you, for you.
Well, how about if I do this? I'll call, I'll call up Mr. Lizinski and I'll ask him. And then I'll report back to Ed Beadshaw.
Ed Beadshaw, something.
Yeah?
Yeah, if it, yeah, nobody ever talked to me about it, I think we can make steps from there.
All right. And that's what I'll do.
Appreciate that.
Any old business?
Um, no, I think Kurt hit on, we're waiting for the meters to be retired over there. Turns out they're back to two of them. One of we didn't know. So it's a good thing we didn't start doing that over there. They could have been a mess. I think that's about all I've got.
Do they indicate anything, what, timeline after the meter?
Scott called it, I mean, I mean, Kurt followed up with them earlier this, yesterday, and they're saying sometime between the 26th and the 31st, you know, it's center point. I'll have somebody there between this, this day and that day, between those hours and these hours.
That's to remove the, that's to remove the.
To remove the meter before we can go in there and get the con. Everything else has been taken care of. Asbestos has been removed. MNC is working on getting the permits taken care of. And as soon as the meters are gone and he gets the permits, we're good to go.
That's what I was asking. If we had a timeframe after the meters were removed. Okay?
Yeah. My hope is to get it done as quickly as possible and make it either usable or at least pretty, prettier.
Okay.
Any other old business? Public comment? Come up and say your name, please.
I'm John Swick. I'm at 746 Shady Lane Court. And I just wanted to have a little positive thing. When I was on the board, we used to have to go through the prints to find the valves, even though I was here when they had it, you know, and we, we double checked. Max Wetback and I. And I can see what happens. Things get misplaced, disappears, whatever it is. But we used to have a guideline out there that told where all the valves were and locations. But I do think that since I'm an old timer, the GPS is better than what we had back in the day. And I appreciate you guys moving up from the old timers to the new stuff, say. And I appreciate what you've done there. Getting back to the cul-de-sac, I'm sure there's some documentation someplace that the board approved at. And it was supposed to be turned over to the town, but I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, I do have to say, I mean, Mark has been really pushing hard on getting those valves and getting that stuff done. And we, I just chewed our own horn a little bit. We really used the COVID money we had and really, I think, set the town up for, to be in really good shape moving forward with, you know, we have extra valves, we have extra equipment. We've got newer vehicles. So we've moved a lot of things ahead and that's under his leadership at this point, so.
Any other public comment?
One more.
Yes.
This is third time, Mark, in two years you're harassing our family and I know it'll never stop. Everything's documented. You guys need to talk to Alicia, our old town attorney. When we had that CMG grant money, they wanted to do Shady Lane and the cul-de-sac up there. And apparently, we've owned that for 30, 40 years. And it was a cul-de-sac when we were there, but they wanted to round it out and put a new service on it, just like Wesleyan Drive cul-de-sac. So they, the only way they could do it is that we donated the land, which we did for a dollar. We donated that. Wesleyan Drive, we donated half and the church donated half. That was on private property, so they could do that. Just like, as I donated a lot of stuff back there. Anyway, Alicia drew up the things. And as my understanding, you can look at all the minutes, look at all the meetings, it's talked about, we talked about it. And we'd be glad to donate it over. And here it is. It's filed in the, recorded in Tippin Canoe County, recorder of January of 2022, both cul-de-sacs. I've never read it before, but I had my wife read it. She said there's a, we, we turned it over before they could do anything. It had to be turned over to them. We didn't ask for them to do it on our property, private property. We donated property to the town at Dayton, Mark, just like down Shady Lane and down on Wesleyan Drive. And just like the water on the west side of the road and everything else, we donated it all, every bit of it. And you're trying to take this and turn it into something absolutely ugly. Now, it wasn't, you were on the board. You were back there on the. Now, it wasn't, you were on the board, you were back there on the board when this stuff was done, just like you mentioned the pumpkin garden, maybe you should have checked those valves, maybe you should have helped. But, you know, the thing is, Mark, you're turning it, you know what it is, we donated everything. We don't try to get anything free, we've never tried to get anything free. I've used, I've donated my salary for all these years, I've never, we've never, we donated hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't want anything free, and I don't want, they had it before they could pave it, it's up to the lawyers at the time and the grant money people, it had to be turned over to them before they would pave it. And that's what we did. So look into it, but I'll, I'll give you the, you can call me sometime here, I wanna keep these two, but here's the recordings of both places.
You have, you have the recorded deed there?
Yeah.
And the, the county does not have a recording?
Well, that's their problem. Here it is, right here by the damn county, Mark. Jeez, no, nobody's gonna get it, I'll get you copies, 'cause I don't trust some of you on there, you'll destroy it. 'Cause you're out to get me, you've been harassing me for two years. No, he's, well, he's doing now, it's harassment.
If you've got the copies, that'll solve the issue.
Well, look at all the tapes, look at what the lawyer did, look at what Mark voted on himself. So, um.
Jeez, yeah, and it was not paid for with CCMG money.
Yeah, it was paid for by the town, and we went, we were doing it at the same time.
Ron, we, we got it, I'll, I'll look into it.
Town to other seven thirty-four one street, uh, way lighter subject. That group that came up here, they wanted to do the music, and we used to do the movies and stuff, what we would do is ask the town vendors to help sponsor each of, like, the day to help us, so they could have, like, the free, um, cone of ice for the kids and all that. So, I was thinking that maybe you guys could look into that, it was, uh, Michelle was the clerk at the time, I'm sure Bridget or Cindy, whoever your guys' vendors are, like, yeah, F and S was really great, we would just set a certain amount, and it's, they only had four events, and you invest, like, five hundred dollars, you can get three or four of your people with five hundred dollars, and you can do, uh, make it more enticing, you know, get the families up here, if you give them free cone of ice, they can cost two hundred dollars to rent that truck, and they give out the tokens, it's just a good, easy way to get some, you know, to bring something to the community without it just stand in front of us. So, something that I told them, they should maybe kind of bring that up to you guys individually. Or, or if you're okay with it, if, like, the, you know, the clerk or, or Bridget or whoever wants to kind of be in charge of maybe like funding events that way, because I know the bicentennial's coming up, and maybe we want money, and they're trying to raise money, but you know, there's not always money, there's not a marketing part in the, the budget, I don't think there is anymore, but if you could just get your vendors to throw in a little bit for each of those things, you could do a lot of stuff, that plus the thing.
Thanks, Tom. Any other public comment? Council comment?
Rocky? Looking forward to that, getting that meter up, getting that tore down over there, so I can try to pursue an idea or two.
Carla?
Yeah?
Okay, uh, so, uh, found out that it looked like there's, uh, there's parking added on to over Detroit's barbecue over here. And our, uh, our ordinance reads that if you add additional parking anywhere, that has to be done with a hard surface, which would be asphalt, concrete, or clean crushed stone. And, um, fortunately, the stone that was put down there was not clean, it's used stone. Uh, I know the contractor was informed that, uh, of what needed to be done, and apparently decided that they were gonna ignore that. So, I guess I'm gonna ask you what, what we should do going forward.
Is that a town ordinance, or is that APC?
Uh, well, there's probably, there's probably a couple of violations there, I think the APC needs to be contacted so that there was a permit. And then I think additionally, the tech, and then there is the town ordinance as well.
Well, you gotta give them a notice, and, you know, there's a fine that's attached to failure to follow town code in. Uh, it's on the code. You know, you might try APC, just see if they would do it for you. I don't know whether they would or not.
Well, the, whatever their, if there's a violation for them, then they'll have to deal with it, and then the town,
Right.
the town, we've decided is gonna deal with, the town's ordinance, we're gonna start, we're gonna enforce the town's ordinances. So, I'll give you a few on that, okay?
And is, is, is the project done? Do we know if it's completed?
I don't know if it's done, but I know that what was done over there was not, was in violation of what the town did. So, maybe they just, maybe they just, maybe they just would've put that gravel down, then they're gonna take it up again and do the cleanst.
Can I answer your question since I'm put in the parking lot? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Here's another harassment again, he's, he's out to get us, that's all he's doing. I'll take it all out, leave stinking mud in there for you. You wanted it nice looking, what the hell does it care if the subsurface underneath, Kurt told me it had that four inches of stone. It's gonna have four inches of clean, stinking stone. Who ca, but it's gonna have additional four or five inches of stone that came from a parking lot, so it's got, it's pit run with stone. So it'll probably end up having six, seven inches of stone. Now, if you don't like it, or wanna harass me, or make me take it out, I won't put nothing in there, and I'll make that look like a stinking hellhole for you.
Can I ask you a question, Ron?
Because all you're doing is harassing.
Can I ask you a question? So you're not, so this isn't completed?
No, hell no, it's not complete.
Did you get?
Did you, did you ask him before you brought this to the council?
No, no, he's not going to.
Okay, so, okay, so that's the problem. You, if you would have asked, you would have known. When he asked, when Steve asked you the question, you said you didn't know.
Um, did you get your permit from the APC?
I don't understand that you have to have a permit to replace the gravel that was always already in there before the house burnt down, but if you do, I'll be glad to get one, I've gotten a thousand permits, Mark.
Someone who's been on, who's been involved in this for twenty years.
I don't have to get one, no, because there was a parking lot there, driveways, Mark. There wasn't.
No, there was.
You know?
A week ago.
Did you get it, where's your permit for putting your gravel parking lot? There is no permit on file, right? Is there a permit for you?
There is no, I do not own a gravel parking lot.
You do too, on your property, that you're trying to get the pavement, that's.
Ron.
Whose property is it?
It's the town's property.
No, it isn't. Mark, every property in front of our house is a utilities right away, it's not the, so if it's a town's, I can park my nursery trucks up there, my tractors and park them there, piss everybody off, right? And everybody can park everywhere in town, in front of everybody's house, and everybody's, you're lying to everybody out here, it's a utility easement out there. It's not the town's, Mark, but you still, okay, that's the town's property.
That's enough.
That's the town's property right over there.
Ron.
It's in the easement.
Ron, please check with APC about a permit and then finish.
Well, this is, this is harassment, this is crap.
I, you're saying, that's fine, but I'm saying, if there's a permit required, please get the permit, and then just finish the project.
I'll tell you one other thing, a year ago, on the phone, he told me that he's either gonna put hook Shady Lane to Wesleyan Drive and hook that water system together, or I won't be able to sell any of my land and split up my lots, and I told him that's blackmail, and he hung up on me. And that's why he had Nikki Beaver's last meeting burned up about that damn loopers, 'cause he's out to get me and my land.
No, I'm out to do what's left.
No, you're not, Mark, you're, you're.
Alright, can we just bring this in, the weather's getting bad, I want these folks to be able to.
Any other council comment? This meeting is adjourned.
We got papers, we signed, Nikki?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Take your umbrella, will you?
Yes.